Test, test.
Call the meeting to order. We've taken roll call. We have a quorum, so we will move forward with announcements. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items number 27, 28, and 35 have been withdrawn, and item 34 has requested deferral, and it is on your consent agenda. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That was quick. We didn't have anybody sign up for public comment, correct? Okay, moving on. Consideration of the minutes. Do we have any comments on the minutes? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything that we need to just pull off or discuss, or take it as a whole? Do I have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving down. Moving down, old business, 27, 28 were withdrawn. We're moving to public hearing, item number 29, amendment to Article 6 of the Williamson County zoning ordinance regarding minor site plans. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So recently, the planning commission reviewed two concept plans for residential developments. There was remaining acreage on those that were to be developed for non-residential uses in the future, and the remaining acreage was not a part of the approved concept plan. So after the meeting, staff heard concerns about the effects these future non-residential uses would have on the surrounding area and the infrastructure, particularly the impact on traffic and how similar uses can have different impacts regardless of the size of the buildings the use occupies. And so those types of uses were such as a fast food restaurant that generate high volumes of traffic but are largely in buildings that are less than 5,000 square feet in size. Staff heard the concerns that site plans for these future non-residential uses would not be reviewed by the planning commission, but rather by staff, and staff does share these concerns. So currently, section 6.01, which you can see on the screen, allows staff to review certain minor site plans for non-residential uses. These are typically site plans where the proposed additions are 5,000 square feet or less, or where there's no building proposed. Staff can also review both non-residential uses and special uses that have been approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, where the square footage for all of the buildings is 5,000 square feet or less. Now, site plans where a single proposed building is 5,001 square feet or more is considered by this body as a major site plan. So it's not unusual for some of the standalone commercial or other non-residential uses to occupy a building that's less than 5,000 square feet, and that would only currently require staff level review. So in order to address the concerns that we heard, we're proposing this amendment, which you can see below, that in yellow and underlined, where this would increase the planning commission's involvement and input with the non-residential uses that may have an impact on infrastructure and the surrounding area in which they are located. If approved, site plans for all new commercial uses found in tables 11.01 and 11.02 of the zoning ordinance would be considered as major site plans and would be reviewed by the planning commission, and this is regardless of the square footage of the buildings. So staff believes that this text amendment will address the concerns that we heard, and we recommend approval of the text amendment and the attached resolution, which was in your packet, be forwarded to the county commission with the recommendation for approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, but we did not have anybody sign up, correct? Okay, so we will go on to any questions or comments from planning commission members. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to non-residential site plan, site plan review revision for deer run and retreat containing zero lots on 81.06 acres located off Perkins Road in the 9th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The retreat is located off Perkins Road. There you see the direction of Perkins Road in the red. The site is 81.06 acres. Project includes a 5,400 square foot administration welcome center, a parking lot, and an entrance gate with a guard shack. There you see the welcome center in the pink, the parking lot in the brown, and then the guard shack in the yellow. Water is provided by HB and TS Utility District. The rural tree is served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Do I have a motion on item 30? Have a motion? Have a second? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 31, site plan review for Hyde Park Hill amenity area containing zero lots on 6.56 acres located off Murphysboro Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant has requested deferral to the June 2025 meeting.
Thank you.
Was that on consent?
It was not on consent.
Okay. Do we have a motion for deferral? Have a second? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 32, site plan review for Healthy Flavors containing zero lots on 17.56 acres located off of Shelbyville Highway in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Healthy Flavors is located off Shelbyville Highway. There you see Shelbyville Highway in the red. The site is 17.56 acres. There you see the site outlined in the pink. The project is to add seven greenhouses totaling 20,160,000 square feet. Now you see the greenhouses in the yellow, and you see it over on the left where it's located on the site. Water is provided by the Non-Insular College Grove Utility District. Sewer is onsite septic system, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any comments on item 32? Any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to concept plans, item 33, concept plan review for Adley subdivision containing 30 lots on 151 acres located off Manly Lane in the 8th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the aerial view of Adley. While zooming into it, you can see the school on the left. This project is located off of Manly Lane. You can see Manly Lane in the red. Property totals 151 acres. It's a 30-lot conservation subdivision. You'll see the lots coming up in the purple. The density is one unit per five acres. The lots are between one acre and 3.52 acres in size. It's 97.46 acres of open space. Everything that's outside of the purple is the open space. The internal roadways will be private and gated. Traffic analysis was reviewed by the county's traffic consultant, and she has recommended approval from a traffic standpoint. Water is provided by the City of Franklin, and sewer is provided by Limestone Water Utility Company. This is the Natural Resource Protection Plan. It contains moderate and very steep slopes. You can see them here on the screen in the light gray and the dark gray. There are pockets of woodlands located on the property, and there are wetlands. You can see them in the red there. And approximately 73% of the site will remain in open space. Staff does recommend approval of the concept plan with all of the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? I have one if the applicant is here. State your name.
Eric McNeely.
Thank you, sir.
McNeely Civil Engineering.
Thank you, Eric. So with limestone, is there a sewer extension? I mean, I know we're at concept stage at this point. What's the overall plan? Is there a sewer extension to get that added on?
Yes, we went through the application, went through the Tennessee Public Utilities Commission, and we got what's called our CCN expansion, which is a certificate of necessity and need to serve the project with sewer. So it's like any other utility. We designed the extension for the sewer system into the subdivision, and they are the utility that accepts it.
Good deal. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Eric. Hearing none. Do we have a motion on item 33? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second on item 33. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to preliminary plats, item 34 was on consent. Item 35 has been withdrawn. Moving on to item 36, preliminary plat revised for Troubadour Golf and Field Club Phase 5 containing four lots on 7.01 acres located off of Clubview Drive in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This plat was previously approved in July of 2023. The phase total 7.01 acres. There are four lots and approximately one acre of open space. The applicant is requesting modification of a specific condition of approval related to the completion of certain roadway improvements prior to the middle of the final plat containing the 288th lot. Those roadway improvements include the widening of Patton Road to 11-foot travel lanes and four-foot shoulders for a distance of 1,000 feet, so that's 500 feet in each direction from the entrance, and those improvements meet the ASHTO requirements for a rural collector roadway. The Williamson County Highway Commission approved the construction plans in March of 2025, and they approved the closure of a portion of Patton Road in April of '25. So the roadway will be closed while school is out of session, and the improvement should be completed by July the 30th. The applicant submitted a revised traffic study indicating the improvements weren't needed until the platting of the 336th lot due to the location of this phase's lots within the development. Our county's traffic consultant reviewed this revised traffic study and concurred with the findings, and has recommended approval from a traffic standpoint. And finally, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report. I do want to note that a final plat for this section does appear as item 45 on your agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on item 36?
So for clarification, the way it was approved before, they needed to do these roadway improvements with the 288th lot. Now we're saying it can wait till the 336th?
Yes, so they can wait until the 336th, however, they are preparing to construct them.
Okay.
What in the new traffic study was compelling to adjust that recommendation?
It was the location of the lots. So on the screen, you can see the location of the lots within the development, and that the traffic would be funneled not to Patton Road, but instead to Cox Road and the existing entrances and exits that exist for Troubadour now. So the distribution of the traffic would go out to Cox Road, not come out to Patton Road.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Colonel?
I've got a question on the golf course. It says in here that they possibly could lease it out, and if they do lease it out, would it still stay private for just the occupants of the subdivision?
And you're talking about the golf course itself could be leased out? Is there an applicant or somebody here?
Good evening. Matt Bryant with M2 Group. The golf course is actually leased, but it's on land that's owned by the HOA, so they have a, the club operates the golf course on land that's owned by the HOA, but there's no intention to open it up to anybody outside of the community.
If they opened it up outside the community, would have to come back to us, or they just automatically could do it?
Christie?
I mean, the setup that they have has been this way for many years, and so when they originally got the golf club approved, I reviewed the lease agreement to make sure it was consistent with the HOA obligations and the common open space. If for some reason it became a commercial golf course that's open to just the general public, that would likely change the use classification, and that would be a different, they'd probably have to just completely do a site plan. But I don't think they're able to even do that, because this is open space that's required in order to meet the density calculations, and so they could ask that all day long, but y'all can't really say no. I mean, you can't say yes based on the zoning ordinance standards.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do I have a motion on item 36? Thank you. Second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 37, preliminary plat review revised for Troubadour Golf and Field Club. Phase 12 contains 16 lots on 22.59 acres located off of Clubview Drive in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This plat was previously approved in December of 2021. This phase totals 29.59 acres. There are 16 lots and approximately 7.6 acres of open space. Again, this is requesting a modification of the specific condition of approval related to the completion of certain roadway improvements prior to the submittal of the final plat containing the 288th lot. Again, the roadway improvements are the widening of Patton Road to the 11-foot travel lanes and four-foot shoulders for a distance of 1,000 feet, and then those improvements meet ASHTO requirements for the rural collector roadway. The Highway Commission approved the construction plans in March and then approved the closure of a portion of Patton Road in April. Again, those improvements will be done during, while school is out of session, and should be completed by July the 30th, and that's before school opens. The applicant did submit the revised traffic study indicating the improvements weren't needed until the 336th lot due to the location of the phase's lots within the development, and the county's traffic consultant did review and concur with those findings. Excuse me. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report, and one additional thing, the final plat for this section appears as item 44 on your agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on item 37? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Second? Do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item 38, preliminary plat revised for Troubadour Golf and Field Club. Phase 13 containing 48 lots on 154.98 acres located off of Clubview Drive in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This phase was previously approved in August of 2023. The phase totals 154.98 acres. There are 48 lots and approximately 66 acres of open space. Again, this is requesting the modification of the same condition related to the completion of the roadway improvements prior to the submittal of the 288th lot. Those roadway improvements include the widening of Patton Road to the 11-foot travel lanes and four-foot shoulders for the distance of 1,000 feet, and those improvements meet ASHTO requirements for the rural collector roadway. Highway Commission approved the construction plans in March and then the closure of a portion of Patton Road in April. And so again, those improvements should be completed while school is out and completed by July 30th before school goes into session. The applicant submitted the revised traffic study indicating the improvements weren't needed until the 336th lot due to the location of the phase's lots within the development. Again, the county's traffic consultant reviewed and concurred with those findings, and staff does recommend approval with the standard conditions outlined in your report. Finally, there are two final plats for this section. They appear as items 46 and 47 on your agenda.
Thank you. Any other, any questions on item 38? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item thirty-nine, preliminary plat review revised for High Park Hill subdivision Phase Four containing forty lots on eighty-one point one-one acres located off of Murfreesboro Road in the fifth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This development is located north of Murfreesboro Road. The space totals eighty-one point one-one acres. It consists of forty lots. The revision is to add acreage to eight lots from open space within the phase. There you see the eight lots in the pink. The required open space is still met. Water is provided by Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Lots are served by non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item thirty-nine? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty, preliminary plat review for Star Creek subdivision Phase Two containing twenty-five lots on twenty-five acres located off of Newtown Road in the second voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This development is located off Arnold College Grove Road. There you see Arnold College Grove Road at the top of the screen. The space totals one hundred and sixty-five point three-two acres. It consists of twenty-five lots. There you see the twenty-five lots in the pink. And there's also approximately twenty-seven acres of open space. You see the open space in the green. Roads will be public. There is the road network in the yellow, and water is provided by the Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. The preliminary plat is consistent with the concept plan, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to the final plats, item forty-one, final plat review for Pruitt Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing one lot on five point oh-three acres located off Lewisburg Pike in the second voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is located off Lewisburg Pike, as you can see in red to your lower left of the screen. The development totals five point zero-three acres. It consists of one lot, as you can see in pink. This will be the fourth lot off a shared access and utility easement shown in green. Water will be provided by the HB and TS Utility District. Wastewater will be handled via individual onsite septic systems. This final plat is consistent with the previously approved preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-one? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? We have a motion in a second, and all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-two, final plat review for Warner Ruger Property Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing one lot on nine point nine-three acres located off of Gose Hill Road in the twelfth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project is located off Gose Hill Road, as you can see in red. The development consists of nine point nine-three acres. It is one lot, as you can see in the blue. Access to the lot will be provided via an access and utility easement shown in yellow. Water will be provided by the Milcroft and Utility District. Wastewater will be handled via individual onsite septic systems. This final plat is consistent with the previously approved preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with a condition regarding the access easement outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-two? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-three, final plat reapproval, review of Arrington Wood subdivision Section One containing three lots on twenty point eight-seven acres located off Nolansville Road in the fifth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Nolansville Road, shown on the left side of the screen in red. The development totals twenty point eight-seven acres in size and contains three lots shown in the pink. There's approximately one acre of open space shown in the green on the bottom left of the screen, and roads within the developments, which are shown in yellow, will be private and gated. The purpose of this reapproval is to move the location of the gate and some water lines. Water will be provided by the Nolansville College Grove Utility District and wastewater handled via individual onsite septic systems. This is consistent with the preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-three? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-four, final plat review for Troubadour Golf and Field Club Section Twelve B containing eight lots on fourteen point nine-six acres off Clubview Drive in the fifth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This development is located off Six Strings Drive, and there you see the road in the red. The development totals fourteen point nine-six acres. It consists of eight lots. There you see the eight lots in the pink. And the slide on the right will sit on top of the one on the left. It's approximately seven point six acres of open space. There you see the open space in the green. Roads within the development are private and gated. Water is provided by the Milcroft and Utility District. Lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. The final plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat. And so long as item thirty-seven was approved, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-four? Do we have a motion? We have a second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-five, final plat review for Troubadour Golf and Field Club Section Five containing four lots on seven point oh-one acres located off of Clubview Drive in the fifth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This section is located off of Trident Ridge Road. There you see Trident Ridge Road in the red. The development total is seven point oh-one acres. It consists of four lots. There you see the four lots in the pink. There's approximately one acre of open space. There you see the open space in the green. Roads within the development are private and gated. There you see the road that will provide access in the yellow. Water provided by the Milcroft and Utility District. The lots are served by a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. This final plat, the revised... or this final plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat. And so long as item thirty-six was approved, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-five? Do we have a motion? Second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-six, final plat review for Troubadour Golf and Field Club Section Thirteen B containing thirty-two lots on forty-two point three-three acres located off of Clubview Drive in the fifth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located north of Cox Road, shown in red on the bottom right of the screen. The development totals forty-two point three-three acres in size and contains thirty-two lots shown in pink. There's approximately twenty acres of open space, which is going to be shown in the green, and the roads within the development are private and gated, shown in the yellow. Water will be provided by Nolansville College Grove Utility District, and wastewater will be handled via non-traditional wastewater treatment disposal system. This plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat, and so long as item thirty-eight was approved, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-six? Do we have a motion? Second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-seven, final plat review for Troubadour Golf and Field Club Section Fourteen containing four lots on six point five-nine acres located off of Clubview Drive in the fifth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located north of Cox Road with an arrow pointing to it on the bottom of the screen. The development totals six point five-nine acres in size. It contains four lots shown in the pink. There's approximately one acre of open space shown in the green on the left side of the screen, and the roads within the development are private and gated, shown in yellow. Water is provided by the Nolansville College Grove Utility District and wastewater handled via a non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system. This plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat, and so long as item thirty-eight is approved, staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-seven? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Item forty-eight, final plat review for Little Creek Farm subdivision containing eighteen lots on fifty-seven point oh-eight acres located off Wilson Pike in the fourth voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located off of Wilson Pike, shown in red on the top right of the screen. The development is approximately fifty-seven point oh-eight acres in size and contains eighteen lots shown in pink. There's approximately twenty-three acres of open space shown in green, and water will be provided by the Milcroft and Utility District and wastewater handled via individual onsite septic systems, which the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved. This plat is consistent with the revised preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-eight? Any... do I have a motion? We have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item forty-nine, final plat review for Archer Springs Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing four lots on thirty-three point seven acres located off of Bennett Hall Road in the second voting district staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located off Bennett Hall Road, shown in red on the right side of the screen. The development totals thirty-three point seven acres in size and contains four lots shown in the pink. The development will be accessed via fifty-foot-wide shared access utility easement shown in the dark green, and water will be provided by the Milcroft and Utility District and wastewater handled via individual onsite septic systems that the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved. This plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval with the standard conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions on item forty-nine? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Do we have any further business?
We do not.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
So moved. Thank you.